Is Ms. Paula available and ready?
We have Colleen Edwards who's up on us today. Paula's out sick today.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Curry. And you said that was Colleen?
Yes, Colleen Edwards.
Thank you. We'll wait one more minute for our other trustee, Ramos, although we do have a quorum. Okay, I see trustee Ramos joining us. On behalf of President Lopez, I will be guiding tonight's meeting for most if not all. If we can please go ahead and call you, call this meeting to order at 5:01 PM. And tonight, Ms. Colleen Edwards will be in place of Ms. Paula. So Ms. Edwards, if you can please give us the roll call.
Trustee Ramos.
Present.
Trustee Calhoun.
Present.
Dr. Little.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Here.
Dr. Curry.
Present.
Thank you very much. We will now move to agenda item 1.02, the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Ramos, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will now move to item two, the approval of the special board meeting agenda. Ms. Edwards, if we, first of all, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by trustee Ramos. Ms. Edwards, can we please have the vote?
Trustee Ramos.
Aye.
Trustee Calhoun.
Aye.
Dr. Little.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Dr. Curry.
I don't vote.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Edwards. We will now move on to item number three, the request to address the Board of Trustees on Agenda and Non-Agenda Matters. Ms. Edwards, do we have any that have made that request?
No, I'm not aware.
Trustee, Dr. Little, if anyone that's in the audience would like to speak, they could either raise their hand or put their name in the chat or they're on the phone, they can type in stay down nine.
Okay, so if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make any formal comment on item number three, please use any of the options as was just stated by Dr. Curry. Again, you can either raise your hand using the reactions, raise hand function. You can also indicate that in the chat function. And if you're using the phone, you can dial nine, I believe.
Right.
Giving time for anyone to respond. I don't currently see any raised hands or any comments in the chat, and I've not heard the number nine. Okay, so we will move on. So, thank you. If we can now move on to item number 3.02, the Compton Community College District Board of Trustees Future Agenda Items Request. I would like to ask if there are any additional future agenda items requests, and if we can start with trustee Ramos.
I have no request, thank you.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes, for what? Yes.
Future agenda items requests.
Okay. Dr. Curry can let me know if this is a future agenda item, because it might just be something in my comments. There's, the best way to say it is, if you drive around Compton, you'll see some signs about putting Emily Hart Holyfield's name back on the library. Dr. Curry, for future agenda item, I would like to know if you can do the research on the day that the termination was made, and I think it was during when El Camino College was over us, that the name was removed and the reason for the name removal. There's a whole lot of stuff being said that's not correct. Mr. Holyfield is going to the council meetings and he continues to bring it up at the council meetings. And there is a petition that's going around, he announced it last night at the council meeting, that there is a petition going around for the game's signatures in order to put her name back on the library. If you could do the investigation, however you do and go back in time to why it was put there, when it was removed, why it was removed, and that, that's what I would like to see.
I'll follow up back up with the board on that item.
Any other requests, trustee Calhoun?
No, it's just that because we need to really put the truth out there. I don't want to go to the council meeting until I have all the information so that it could be placed in their record also.
Thank you. Trustee Lopez, do you have any requests for future agenda items? Okay, we will move.
No.
Okay, thank you. And I, I do not either. I would just like to follow up on requests made by trustee Calhoun for us to get that information and be able to convey it to the community. Moving on to agenda item number four, our consent agenda. There are three items, and we can either accept and vote on all of these together or as individual items. So trustees, do we want to make a motion for all three of these under item number four, or do we want to address them individually?
I'd like to make a motion that we take item 401, 402, and 403, unless anybody has any question, as one.
Okay, the motion has been made at the item four, consent agenda be viewed as one by trustee Calhoun. It has been seconded by trustee Ramos. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, Ms. Edwards, can we please call for the vote?
Trustee Ramos.
Aye.
Trustee Calhoun. Trustee Calhoun.
Aye.
Dr. Little.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move on to agenda item number five. And these are items that we will look at independently. We will begin with 5.01 for the, I'm sorry, Dr. Curry?
These are actual items, but if the board would like to group it in the one they can, but this is, these are actual items, these can't be grouped.
Okay, thank you very much. So similarly to the items in agenda item number four, all of the agenda items, 5.01 through 5.05 can be grouped. We have a motion to view all of the items under agenda item five as one.
I'll make the motion that we take all of them, 501, 502, 503, 504, and 505 as one, unless somebody has a question.
Okay, the motion has been made by trustee Calhoun that we view and group all the items on number five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Ramos has now seconded trustee Calhoun's motion. Is there any discussion?
No, no discussion for me.
Being that there is no discussion, Ms. Edwards, can we please call for the vote?
Trustee Ramos.
Aye.
Trustee Calhoun.
Aye.
Dr. Little.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on now to agenda item number six, selection process for trustee area four. This agenda item is discussing the process for the selection of applicants for trustee area for interviews. This item lays out the entire process that will be adhered to. Is there a motion to accept recommendation for this process?
Okay, can I, Dr. Little?
Yes.
So the, the item includes the resolution regards to professional appointment. We received one applicant, uh, Radita Deport, and we also provided her application packet here for you, and also the election calls. So it's up to the board, if you want to determine that you would like to interview her at the next special meeting on December 14th.
Yes, sir. And that is also going to be discussed in item number seven. And so for what is up for acceptance, if we agree with this item, is that we will forego an election and use the interview process of the candidate that has been submitted in lieu of the election process. That is what item six is laying out. Is that clear, trustees?
All right, we couldn't have interviewed her tonight?
No, it will happen.
Wait, what, what, I'm sorry. What was you saying, Vice President?
I was saying that it will, we have a designated board meeting December 14th that is dedicated to the interview process.
And then we have a meeting on the 15th also, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So then I would like.
So I would need a motion to approve that this will be the process in terms of interviewing the one applicant in lieu of an election. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for item 601.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by trustee Ramos. Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Can we please call for the vote?
Trustee Ramos.
Aye.
Trustee Calhoun.
Aye.
Dr. Little.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Yes.
We'll now move on to the agenda item number seven, which is a follow-up to the agenda item number six that we just discussed, which is the candidate selection for trustee area four. As was just indicated, we do have one applicant, and we, this is the motion that we will have a special board meeting on December 14th to utilize the process of interview and how that interview process will commence with one applicant. I have a motion that we will adhere to the interview process on December 14th, 2021 at 4:00 PM.
Dr. Little, before you do that, can I provide some background information on this item?
Yes, you may.
So first, I want to talk about the process. Lauren, could you open up the process maybe, Dr. Last one? So the, the interview process will include a three-minute candidate opening statement, 15 minutes for the board to ask, answer, ask questions, two minutes closing remarks, and then we have a timekeeper who will give alert at the one-minute mark. If the candidate is selected, the candidate will be able to have the oath of office on December 14th, and that what the process will be. Is the board okay with that? That's the, that's the first question for the vote. And the second part of the vote, can you close that, Lauren? The second part, we drafted questions for the board, and these were draft questions. And I'll just, it is, I think it's eight questions. Can you scroll down? Yeah, perfect. It's seven questions? Go back up. It's seven questions, and if the board is okay with those, then those will be the questions that will be asked, or if you want to change the questions, then we can change the questions as well.
For clarification, Dr. Curry, we have, these are the proposed questions.
Correct.
Will these seven preclude us if we agree on these are natural questions that come out of the conversation? Or are we limited to only these seven?
Well, we'd be limited to these, these seven, these are something that we provide to the applicant.
Wait, what, what did you say, Dr. Curry?
I said, these are questions that we would share with the applicant, but we could also tell the applicant there may be other questions that could be asked.
I, I think that's what you should do. I think that's what should, what should be done, that you should inform her that there might be other questions that might be asked that are not up there. Do she have to know those questions that we want to ask?
No, they're, they're, it'll be public. So at the end of the day, these questions will be public, but in the communication, we will let them know, let her know that there could be additional questions that could be asked during the interview session.
All right, thank you.
So this item is for us to approve both the process as itemized in the five items of three minutes max for the candidate opening statement, the 15 minutes total for board members to ask questions, and that is a total of all board members, the, the four of us, that we would have a total of 15 minutes with questions and any follow-up, two minutes max for candidate closing remarks, and then a decision will be made, and then if chosen, the oath of office at the end of that meeting. That is part A of this process. So that would be a total of 20 minutes for the interview process. So we need to decide if that's sufficient time. And the second part of that is the use, primary use of the seven questions as the guide and, and additional relevant questions that may emerge from the conversation. So that is what is up for motion at this particular time. Dr. Curry, point of clarification, if there are recommended changes, that would be after discussion and then amendment to the motion, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so currently we have a motion to.
It was never done though. The motion wasn't, wasn't approved because I objected with information.
But I'm asking, do we have to have first motion on what has been presented, or can we have discussion first and then have a modification to whatever we ultimately decide upon and then advance that motion?
Correct, you can't do that.
I can?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Because you, because you do an initial motion, and then you have a discussion, and you can modify it, and then come back, the two people have to pull it back.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So currently we have the motion on the floor to accept the process as itemized and the questions as itemized. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So it has been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by trustee Calhoun. You have discussion?
Yeah, I have discussion. Why do we have to make?
Trustee Calhoun.
Why do we have to make a second motion? Why can't we just say with those seven questions right there, in addition, if there's any other questions that might be asked, if not there? Why do we have to make another motion?
If we decide that the 20 minutes is not long enough, if someone feels that the 20 minutes is not long enough, if no one feels that we needed more time, then we don't have to make another motion.
Okay, are we going to ask all the seven questions? I'm just.
That's what we have outlined.
We have one candidate. Okay. Okay.
So do you have any questions or concerns?
Do I have another question besides what's up there?
In terms of related to the process or the questions?
No.
The time or?
No, no, 20 minutes or 30 minutes is fine with me.
Well, right now, we're at 20 minutes, that's it. That's what, that's what this process is, limiting it to 20 minutes, three minutes max for the candidate, 15 minutes total for the board members, two minutes max for the closing remarks.
Okay.
If there, if you desire to modify that, this is the time. I'm just going through each person. We, we do have the option to modify it.
Okay, why don't we just do 30 minutes, and if we don't take up to 30 minutes for this interview, then it could be stopped. You know what I'm saying? Why? Because we don't know how long it's going to take her to answer a question. Are we giving her one minute to answer the question? We're giving her three minutes for open, right? Two minutes for closing. What are the minutes we're giving her to answer the question?
It's not itemized.
Okay.
Then, so, yes. Okay, so I've heard your, your recommendation to move to 25 minutes for board members' ability to ask questions.
I said 30.
No, 30 for questions or 30 for the total?
30 for the total.
That would be 25 for the board and five minutes for the candidate.
All right.
Trustee Ramos, any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, do you have any thoughts about the proposed revision to 25 minutes instead of 15 minutes?
I, I'm fine with that.
Okay, trustee Lopez, any discussion or thoughts about the proposed revision?
No.
Okay, I agree with trustee Calhoun that I think we should give ourselves the 25 minutes, and if we use less than that, um, we do, uh, give back the time. I think, so for the modification, the proposed modification would be remaining three minutes max for the candidate opening statement, 25 minutes total for board members to ask questions, and two minutes max for candidate closing remarks, with number four remaining the same in terms of being alerted when we have one minute and 30 seconds left. And then upon the decision, the candidate will take the oath of office at the December 14th, 2021 meeting if so chosen. So I will now need to have trustee Ramos, Dr. Curry, either withdraw the initial motion, or we come up with a revised motion.
Draw the original and then do a new motion with a change.
Okay, trustee Ramos. Can you withdraw?
I'll withdraw my motion.
And trustee Calhoun, can you withdraw your second?
I will withdraw my second.
So now I have a motion on the floor that we, for item number seven, agenda item, that the process for the trustee area for vacancy is that we will provide three minutes max for candidate opening statement, 25 minutes total for board members collectively to ask questions of the candidate, and then two minutes max for candidate closing remarks, as well as utilizing the seven questions as the primary questions with some relevant organic questions that may emerge from the conversation. That is the motion on the floor. Can I get a motion?
Move.
It has been moved by trustee Ramos. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Calhoun. Ms. Edwards, can I please? Is there any conversation or discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. Okay, Ms. Edwards, can I please call for the vote?
Trustee Ramos.
Aye.
Trustee Calhoun.
Aye.
Dr. Little.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Okay. One second, please. Just want to make sure I have everything pulled up. So we will move on now to item number eight, which are oral reports. Dr. Curry, we will begin with you.
No report.
No report. Trustee Calhoun.
Yes, I would like for us to close in the memory of the first African-American golfer, Lee Elder, to play at the Masters, who broke the race barrier, passed away at 87. And Dr. DeBoer LeBlanc requested for Compton College to receive his cap in his honor. And so, Dr. Curry, can you please contact the former board member, Dr. DeBoer LeBlanc, about the cap?
Yes, I will.
Okay, and the other one, I would like to also close in the memory of Paramount School District Board Member Linda Garcia, who passed away. Linda was a board member for Paramount Unified School District, I think for over 20 years. 20 years. And the last person that I would like to close in the memory, her name is Rosa Gutierrez. She was my former liaison when I was on the Compton City Council. She passed away of cancer. She fought a good fight because she fought it, and it went away, but it came back again more aggressively. So I would like to see us close in the memory of those three names. Oh, and one other person, I'm sorry, Joe Wilkerson. She didn't realize that she had a heart attack. As she went to the hospital and from the heart attack, she had a stroke, went into a coma, and passed away. Longtime friend, Joe Wilkerson, J.O. Wilkerson. So those are my comments.
Thank you, trustee Calhoun. Trustee Ramos.
No report, thank you.
Trustee Lopez.
No.
Special trustee Farrell.
Uh, no report, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, our next special board of trustees meeting will be held on next Tuesday, December the 14th, 2021 at 4:00 PM, as was just discussed in relationship to replacing our trustee area four member. Um, moving on to item number 10, our next regularly scheduled Board of Trustees meeting will be held Wednesday, a week from tonight, December 15th, 2021. Our closed session will begin at 4:00 PM, and our regular, uh, public meeting will begin at 5:00 PM. Do we have any questions?
I do.
Yes, trustee.
All right, I meant to ask this question. Special board meeting on the 14th, on, on the 14th, it's going to be like the regular agenda all the way down to 22, and if it's a special board meeting, we have closed session. I'm just asking, it's throwing me off.
There's only an open session at 4:00 PM. There's only an open session at 4:00 PM for the special, but on the 15th, it is, um, closed because that's our regular scheduled next Board of Trustees meeting.
Okay.
Regular process.
Okay, I was looking at it wrong because I, when, once, when I see 4:00 PM, that means it's closed session to me, and then the other meeting starts at 5:00. Okay, thank you. I'm clarifying that. Thank you.
Yes, it's a public, open meeting for the interviews.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would like to, um, also adjourn in the memory of Jacqueline Avant, who was, um, a longtime activist and community philanthropist who was tragically, uh, killed, and for all of those who, families who have been enduring, um, violence and loss. And we will now adjourn this meeting at 5:30 PM. Thank you all.
All right.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.